If we could have our seats, please. Thank you.
I don't want to wait for the council. I'm not going to wait. Somebody don't like it too bad.
Thank you. Thank you. The meeting's called back to order. There are no postponed items, so we'll move to regular business.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if we had it up or did we skip for?
Oh, I'm sorry. The council comments. I wanted to move on to regular business.
My question was, Mr. Zerlik, can you? Councilman Zerlik, can you just kind of give us an update with meetings with the Chamber of Commerce regarding the Transit Center? I don't think we've talked about the Transit Center for at least two weeks, so I got to get my fix.
Sure. I know that Mr. Miller had attended the last meeting with the Chamber of Commerce, and he can provide an update there, but not to take away any of his thunder, Mr. Miller's thunder, but staff has been negotiating with the Federal Rail Administration relative to costs for maintenance of the Transit Center, and it's looking like all of our costs for maintenance will be covered. We're using Dearborn's lease as an example, and I'm reviewing the lease myself right now, so that's good news, and I'm confident it's going to reach fruition in that respect. And that said, Mark can talk about his efforts with the Chamber.
Madam Mayor, Council, I met with Michelle Hodges, the Executive Director, and one of the things that we need to do is we made contact with Lori Bloom, the city attorney, because a consent agreement with Grand Stockway limits the number of uses and the possible business opportunities in that location. So we've done that research, and now we're starting to assimilate that and see how we could have, take advantage of any business opportunities and how the Chamber could expand upon that. But the one thing I would caution, that building will be restricted to uses related to the Transit Center. And I will also say that we have been in contact, they've come to us, about companies who want to have sponsorships. So we're looking at working with the city attorney's office on policy on, what's the right term? Sponsorships and naming rights for that facility and others. We've actually had corporations come to us. So we'll continue to expand upon that.
Madam Zerlik.
Thank you. I misspoke. It wasn't the Federal Rail Administration. It's Amtrak that we're negotiating with.
I also do want to make note of the fact that ex-Mayor Jeanie Stein's husband had Alzheimer's, and so that, I understand, was part of the reason why he used a weapon and had some kind of altercation. I'm not sure what the details were, but I just wanted to make that clear. Is there anyone else that wants to make comments? Councilman Slater?
Just briefly about the DDA. I can't say much, but there is negotiations taking place, and I don't think we're at liberty to say where we're at at this point, but believe me, it is a priority of this council. We're looking at it strongly, and I'm confident that we're going to come to a resolution on that.
Madam Zerlik, you had mentioned one other time why we aren't having DDA meetings. If you'd like to repeat the reason why we're not having meetings?
Sure. Councilman Slater, just so indicated, but we are, number one is that there's really nothing to discuss in terms of any ongoing operational issues. There's no projects on the books, per se. We do have, as Mr. Slater mentioned, there's a debt service issue that we have to address because the, and I'll give about a two-minute explanation. The DDA was formulated, I think it was 1994, it was formulated primarily as an economic development tool to entice Franklin Forbes Cohen to build Somerset Collection North, and the DDA was created to front the money for a parking structure that Franklin Forbes Cohen would pay back. And it reached fruition. Somerset Collection is our number-one taxpayer in the city. It was at that time, it still is at this time. DDA bonds were also floated to widen Big Beaver Road, as well as to have a portion of the adaptive reuse for the old Troy High into the community center. That gets, I think, about a million visitors every 12 or 18 months. What happens with the DDA, with all DDAs in Michigan, is that there's a snapshot taken of the taxable value at a certain point in time, and then any increments from those taxes are taken by the DDA to pay for debt service and capital projects. With the downturn of the economy, the DDA essentially became upside down in terms of its debt service requirements against the level of taxable income that was coming in, and as Mr. Slater just indicated, we're trying to find a solution with the help of our bond counsel, Terry Donnelly, who's in the audience, as well as our financial advisor, Benzinski Associates, as well as our city attorney, Mark Miller, Tom Darling, and myself. We are working toward a solution. I can't discuss anything further beyond that point, but we can discuss it with city council in a closed session. However, the public can be rest assured that any decision that's made will be made in the public.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have a question. Thank you. We had someone speak to us at Public Comment regarding the tree ordinance, and I know that this is an issue that that citizen has brought forth several times to council and through email, and I know that some council members have specifically requested a response to that, and I believe it was shared with the citizen. I don't know if anyone would like to go forward on that here while we've got the audience of the people at home as well, so that we can make sure that that's addressed.
Madam Mayor, I can clarify some facts related to that subject if you so desire.
Absolutely.
First of all, the city has never had a tree ordinance. There was a tree preservation and landscape design standards adopted. That ordinance never required or mandated the preservation of trees or woodlands preservation. And just so everyone understands, what I mean by that is, if you develop this property, you shall save these trees. It never said that. It did have standards that required that you tear down or demolish trees less than four inch of DBH, DBH means diameter at breast height, or greater than ten inch. And that, so what it did is, if that developer so desired, it set forth standards if they voluntarily wanted to preserve those trees, but they were never mandated. However, in 2000, there was, city council provided direction to city management and city attorney's office to look at developing a woodlands preservation and natural features preservation ordinance. That was, a draft was prepared, there was a public hearing, and it died. That would have mandated preservation of trees, but it died after the public hearing. Then in 2006, which was brought up, there was a revision to the landscape design, excuse me, tree preservation and landscape design standards. That was tabled by council, and that was, more teeth were put into that for preservation. So that never occurred. However, since that document has never required preservation, what we've done is taken the landscape design attributes, and that's, you know, the landscaping you do with the development, and incorporated into the zoning ordinance. And so therefore, the design standards are within the zoning ordinance. But, and I don't want to seem repetitive, but I will be, the city has never required tree preservation as a mandate, and we don't now.
Thank you. Any other comments?
If everybody else is done.
Councilman Slater?
You spoke briefly about Mayor Stein. This is the second time that this Charlene Feminini always comes to this podium and attacks the Stein family, okay? The next time she comes to the podium, I would like her cautioned to not do that again, please. They don't deserve that. Jeanie Stein does not deserve that, okay? I would like you to caution her the next time she comes here, please.
Thank you. All right, that concludes council response. There are no postponed items. We move to regular business. There are no board or committee appointments. There are mayoral nominations, and I need more time to vet the interested parties, so I would like to move a resolution to postpone that item until the April 16th meeting. Someone? Yes, ma'am?
You don't actually need to postpone it. You can just not act on it.
Okay, all right. Now, Mayor Protem, if you'd like to take over for the council nominations?
Actually, at this time, I will be taking no action as well. There are a couple that are listed here, and I'm sure everyone had an opportunity to look over the dates. I believe the expiration dates are not until the end of April, so I will be addressing some of these at the April 16th meeting. Coupes applies. There's quite a few names here. I want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to review the applications. And also, as Mayor Protem, it is my responsibility to directly contact anyone just to see if their name is in fact listed here as an interested person, that they're still interested, because some of them have turned in their applications quite some time ago, and I don't believe that that's going to postpone anything, and as everyone on council is aware, that until there are replacements, the people that are currently serving on those boards and committees will continue to do so, so there won't be any interruption in service from our boards and committees.
Okay. There is a request for a closed session. Can we move the resolution, please, someone? Councilman Slater?
Okay, I'm looking for it, okay. Be it resolved that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by, excuse me, MCL 15.268 (E), pending litigation, Robert and Michelle Riddle v. City of Troy.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Slater, supported by Councilman Fleming. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. We have a resolution to approve a cost participation agreement for the resurfacing of Livinoy Road from Big Beaver to Waddles. Could someone please move that resolution forward?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Resulted that the cost participation agreement between the City of Troy and the Board of Road Commissioners for Oakland County for the resurfacing of Livinoy Road from Big Beaver to Waddles is hereby approved at an estimated cost to the City of Troy of $106,000, with the actual local match to be determined upon completion of state financial audits, and the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute this agreement, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Protem McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Teetz. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilman Fleming, Slater?
If I could just ask staff, some people may be questioning, why did we pick Livinoy between this area when there's other areas in the city that are obviously worse than this area? If you could just briefly explain, if somebody could just briefly explain to the people why?
I would be happy to explain, but Steve Van Dett would be happier, and he's coming up to the microphone right now.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. The answer is, we did not pick this project. It's a county road. It belongs to the county. It's a county project, and so they determine which of their county roads they decide to do, and this one happens to have federal funding associated with it, as does the next project, and it takes, on average, about four years for that funding, to wait in line for that funding to be available, and when it is, don't pass it up or else it won't come back again. So, again, it was, it's determined by the Road Commission for Oakland County.
Do you know what their criteria is for making that determination?
Yes, there is a rating formula that's used. It's based on traffic, condition of the road, accidents, cost of rehabilitation, and several other factors that I can't name off the top of my head at the moment, but it's a formula that is used universally by all cities and counties within, I'm sorry, by Oakland County and all the cities within Oakland County who are competing for federal funds.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think rigibility is also a factor, isn't it, Steve?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Rigibility, is that also a factor?
Well, yes, and we have actually used the formula on several projects that we think are worthy of repair, but they don't score very high because the traffic volume is lower. So it's a combination of things, and it's certainly not just based on condition.
Thank you. Any other discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is an approval of amendment that basically acknowledges the City of Troy's agreement as a participant in the Justice Assistant Grant Program to transfer equipment from the City of Pontiac to the Oakland County Sheriff's Office, because the sheriff's office is now providing complete law enforcement services to the City of Pontiac. Could someone please move this resolution forward? Councilman Fleming?
I'll move the resolution, I-5, as printed.
Second?
Support.
Well, I was looking at Mayor Protem McGinnis, moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Mayor Protem McGinnis. Discussion, please?
Mayor, it was moved by Councilman Fleming?
I'm sorry. Mr. Councilman Fleming, seconded by Mayor Protem McGinnis. Discussion? Vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is a general obligation, a limited tax refunding bonds. Could someone please move this resolution forward? Madam Mayor. Councilman Slater had raised his hand.
She can't see my hand. I'll move the resolution, how many pages? As printed. Seventeen pages, as printed.
Support. Okay. Moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Mayor Protem McGinnis. Discussion?
Mayor? I'm sorry.
No.
I read it all. It was an interesting read, but I would appreciate if we could get some sort of maybe commentary from the city manager regarding bond issues 101 and Sanctuary Lake in general, so we can get a better flavor of.
Madam Zerlik?
Thank you. I'll be happy to give a thumbnail sketch. I also have, as always, Mr. Darling, our finance director, has a season's ticket in this regard. In addition, we have Terry Donnelly, bond counsel, as well as John Wheatley, our financial advisor with Benzinski Associates. Generally speaking, you know, we have bonds that are known as being callable, which means if there's a better interest rate on our debt service obligation, our financial advisor, Benzinski Associates, in conjunction with our bond counsel, Terry Donnelly, talked to our finance director, Tom Darling, and advised him of such. There's also a review by our city attorney. In this case, it's the golf course bonds for Sanctuary Lake, and by refinancing those bonds, we can generate savings of over half a million dollars compared to the rate we're currently paying. And if there's any further questions, I'm sure that between Tom and Terry and John, they can have an answer with much more specificity than I.
Mr. Darling?
Well, I think that was well articulated, city managers. Yes, again, basically, our bond counsel and advisors review, along with us, review our bonds that we have outstanding periodically to see when they're callable and what are the interest rates compared to when we first purchased them. In this case, it's the 2002 golf course bonds. When they were purchased, the rates that we're paying right now is between 4.4% and 5%. Right now, the market, the way we project as it stands right now, that we will be getting into, we'll be able to refinance, call those bonds 100% of them, at an interest rate between 2% to 4% on the coupon bonds, which would result really in about a 2.47 yield rate or effective interest rate, if you will. So as you can see, what that would result in, and really, it's kind of apparent when you look at page four of the Benzinski report, it shows, here's the total principal and interest by call date that we would have to pay on the new bonds compared to the old bonds, and it shows that the actual cash savings would be around $642,000 over the life of the bonds that run through 2027. Being the accountants that we are, we present value that at the current interest rate of 2.47%. So the present value in today's dollars, savings that the city would benefit from, is $542,497. That's net of any cost that would be related into going to the market with these bonds. So that's why we're recommending, council approves, our council approves us going out to refinance.
Councilman Slater?
Thank you. I was going to ask that question, but what happens with the cost savings for the bonds? Does it have to stay with the debt for the bond to the city? Is it, do we pay down the bond faster? Is that what happens?
We are not going to pay it down any faster, because it's going to run through the same term as the original bonds. However, as you can see from page four, instead of paying out $13.9 million, we will actually, excuse me, we will only be paying out $13.9 million in principal and interest, as opposed to what we have now at about $14.559 million. So again, that's $642,000 of savings. As far, where's the savings go? The savings is that, I mean, we're not paying that out. Obviously, the golf course bonds is part of the golf course, and it's savings from operations. Clearly, when you pay off debt, it's from the operation or net assets that you have accumulated to pay off those debts. If you're not spending it, obviously, it goes as part of net assets. If you're asking where it goes, it's not spent, so you have it. It's available for future operations.
For future operations or the golf course?
Yes.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Teetz?
And right now, with Sanctuary Lakes, the city is subsidizing the operation of that, so in fact, our subsidy would have, would be less. Is that correct?
Kind of word, yes.
Yes, I hate to use the word subsidy, because that's a specific meaning in my book. I mean, the idea is that, yes, there's a cash flow issue where the general fund is subsidizing Sanctuary Lake, but being that in mind, there's a receivable to pay that back, and I foresee that happening. So again, it's a cash flow. To me, subsidy is, hey, I'm giving it to you, and I don't expect you to pay me back. In this case, that's not true.
Councilman Fleming?
This savings is based upon what we know today, is what we can refinance the bonds at. If we wait, that can change. Is there a window that we have to make this decision? I know the market's flexible. What would happen if we didn't make a decision tonight? Two points to this question. If we decide to do this tonight, what's our confidence that we will save, actually save the $542,000? And if we don't do it tonight, what are we risking waiting another month?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Terry Donnelly from Dickens. All right, we've been appointed as bond counsel on this project. Right now, during the first three months of this year, the municipal market has been experiencing almost historic lows in interest rates, and so I've been doing this for a long time. Most of my practice this year has been refinancing debt like you folks are considering right now. The numbers that you saw, the ones that Mr. Darling described for you, were, those numbers were run based on market conditions on March 7th, so we're now almost a month later. The market has softened a little bit, so rates are going up a little bit, but it, and I'm a lawyer, not the financial advisor. He will, he can address that. But generally, our advice is, if you're thinking about doing this, take the action now, and then we'll see where the market is. The market, from everything I've read, does not look like it's going to get any better. It's still relatively firm. I mean, we've got a lot of these in the shop right now, and it, from our advice to clients generally is, if you're thinking about doing it, then go ahead and approve the resolution, because at least you're able to get into the market right away. If you approve this tonight, the expectation would be that we would price these bonds in about a month, and then because of some tax issues and some economic issues, we probably wouldn't close until maybe late June, but that's the schedule right now. But generally, with markets being like that, they are really at historic lows. The month of March, for instance, compared to the month of March in 2011 was up 82% nationally, and most of that was refinancing from year to year, and that's because of these almost historically low interest rates right now. And I'll turn it over to the financial guy.
Good evening. My name is John Wheatley. I work with Benzinski and Company. Just to kind of reiterate what Mr. Donnelly said, we are, you know, in a market right now where, you know, the rates have been really low. Unfortunately, they're on the upswing, but we do just want to put ourselves in a position where we can do the financing. If the resolution is adopted, we will begin the process of preparing the offering documents, and as part of that process, we'll get a rating from S&amp;P, which would be just kind of an update to the city's rating. Once we have all that in place, we can enter the marketplace and price the bonds, and as part of that process, we'd be working directly with the finance director and the city manager, you know, to make sure that we meet whatever expectations that you do have. So if the rates go up to a point where we don't think that it's justifiable, then we hold off until it does make sense. So just because you do adopt the resolution tonight does not mean that we have to do it. It just means that you have, that we have the authorization to do so if the market conditions are correct.
What is this going to cost us? Is that $500,000 savings figure, a net figure, after cost?
The savings number that we're talking about is after paying all costs associated with issuing the bonds, so.
Okay, okay. That's a good enough answer for me. Councilman Fleming?
So if we make a decision tonight, and you go out and do your best due diligence to reissue these bonds at a lower interest rate, will the council see this again, or is this it? I mean, are we setting a?
This resolution is set up the same way. You folks refunded two voted bond issues that we worked on in 2010, and this resolution is structured like most of the ones we've done in the last three or four years, so that it doesn't need to come back to council. There are parameters in there, and the threshold is, based on the advice, the recommendation from your financial advisor, it there be present value savings. Right now, as a market convention, normally, there's at least 2% present value savings against the amount of the bonds being refunded. This is at 5.4% right now. It's well into the money.
Okay.
And, but the idea would be that this resolution delegates to the city manager the same way the prior resolutions did, to accept the offer from the underwriter if he deems it appropriate. And it's no different than what you were, what you authorized in 2010.
Gotcha.
Madam Zerlik?
Thank you. And of course, what we'll do is, once the refinancing is consummated and a rate is locked in, we'll have a report indicating what that savings is, you know? We estimated $540,000. It's really $592,000. And so you'll have an indication of what that net savings actually is.
Now, this is a piecemeal operation, like a certain portion of it could be refinanced at one time, or is this a lump sum?
This will, based because of the way the federal tax law works, this is the one bite at the apple, and generally, these bonds can be, these bonds can't be prepaid until December of 2014, so some of the early ones, it may not make economic sense to do that. In fact, it may increase your savings by not refunding those, and that's the likely result.
I see, thank you.
Mayor?
Councilman Henderson?
I have just one question on Mr. Darling's memo, the second paragraph, and I'll just read it, and if you could just give me some clarification on that. The city, which has already pledged its full faith and credit, would issue the new bonds instead of the municipal building authority. Can you just, for clarity's sake?
Would you like to?
I should answer that, that's really a legal question. The building authority issued the bonds in 2002, and it's become quite common, after the revised Municipal Finance Act was passed in 2001, that a lot of these building authority bonds, they're authorized to be refunded by the person or the entity that's actually obligated to provide the credit support. So, in this particular case, the building authority issued the bonds in 2002, but it's the city's general fund that's obligated to repay the bonds by virtue of this, it's called a full faith and credit contract of leisure, obligated to make lease payments to pay the bonds, and that's a general fund obligation. And so, with this new law now, it permits you essentially to streamline government, and the city can take, can do this on its own without having to involve the building authority. That was the recommendation from the financial advisor, and that's the way we drafted the resolution.
Manager Sterling?
Thank you, a question for Terry or John. What role has our Sterling credit rating played in these rates?
Quite a bit, I mean, the ratings are, you know, are a function, when you price these, the interest rates are a function of your credit rating, and you've got a very high credit rating, and I've said enough for a lawyer, and I'm gonna let.
Yeah, basically, the pricing is part of the packet, assumes the AAA rating scale, so you're definitely gonna be paying less in interest costs over the life of the loan because of that credit rating.
And the reason I mention that is because some, there's been some narratives that we don't, as a city, need a high credit rating, because we're not going to issue bonds for a long time, but the fact of the matter is that if we maintain a high credit rating, we can, and our bonds are callable, we can enjoy a savings, substantial savings, in recalling the bonds, because we are not precluded from the market by having a low credit rate.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Any other discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. We move to approval of a cost participation agreement for the resurfacing of 14-mile road from Campbell to Stevenson. Would someone like to move the resolution forward?
Madam Mayor? Mayor Proton McGinnis? Resolved that the cost participation agreement between the City of Troy and the Board of Road Commissioners for Oakland County for the resurfacing of 14-mile road from Campbell to Stevenson Highway is hereby approved at an estimated cost to the City of Troy of $125,000, with the actual local match to be determined upon completion of state financial audits, and the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute this agreement, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Second? Moved by Mayor Proton McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Fleming, discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes, we now move to consent agenda items. Are there any consent agenda items that anyone would like to remove for discussion? No, then could we have a resolution, please? Councilman Fleming, or Slater, I'm sorry?
Move the resolution, but before I do, I noticed there was a memorandum placed on the table regarding the minutes, and I think we would need to discuss this before we would approve the minutes in the consent agenda, if that was the intent of this.
You could move the consent agenda and just pull the minutes and discuss them afterwards, or you could discuss them?
Well, I don't know if that was the intent to do that, or I was, I didn't do this.
No, I didn't, the, go ahead, I mean, I don't know what.
It was a request to have the public comment from the previous meeting revised, kind of the format of how we were putting, how we were recording the comments made by the public, so you could pull the minutes from this meeting, and we can discuss the format of the current minutes that are on the agenda, or you could move them as amended, and they'll be amended to reflect how it's shown on the table.
Councilman Slater?
I didn't know whether the mayor was going to pull this from the consent agenda, so I was reluctant to move the resolution. I am not in favor of this, and am willing to discuss it, but do you want this?
Should we pull it from the, I mean, no, if you wanna discuss it, we could pull it from the consent agenda items.
Well, it wasn't even moved to be amended, so if I move the consent agenda, it will get approved as it was last week, correct?
You can move it with the minutes amended.
I don't wanna do that.
Okay. Then you can move the consent agenda with that item removed, so that they can, we can discuss it after.
Okay, so moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
I'm sorry?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Councilman Campbell, to remove item, let's see, J2. So, we'll vote on the consent agenda items without J2. Would someone like to move the resolution?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes, so we'll address all of the consent agenda items except J2.
You just voted on all the consent agenda items?
Oh, we just did do that, oh, I thought you were telling me we had to vote on moving it out of there. All right, so now we're going to discuss J2, Councilman Slater, you have the floor?
Well, Mayor, I believe this was your, you wanted to do this, if you could just explain to me why we are changing the format, I'd appreciate that first.
I wasn't attempting to change the format, I made a phone call to City Clerk, Mrs. Bittner, and I said that the comment that was listed was that comments were about the recall of Mayor Daniels, that was the description of one of the public, the people that came up to the podium to speak during public comments, and I knew that this particular person was speaking on my behalf, so I said, well, could we put that it was speaking in, against the recall of Mayor Daniels? And then, in discussion, I didn't want this to become a major issue for Mrs. Bittner to have to describe in detail whether people were for or against, so I just simply said, well, why don't we just generalize it and just say spoke about Mayor Daniels, rather than recall or any particular issues. I didn't think it was an issue that rose to the level of needing approval of the Council, my apologies, if in fact it is, I'm happy to vote on it if that's what you would like. So, I didn't know if you wanna pass or move a resolution?
I was curious why this happened without an explanation, because this is, we have done this for many, many years, and then all of a sudden, we were changing it, so I didn't want to move this resolution without having an explanation, so I think if we changed it to this, it would be a misrepresentation of what the people said at the podium, and I think we wanna reflect accurately what the citizens have said.
Well, you see, it was a misrepresentation of what was said at the podium, because he was speaking against the recall of me.
And we should just correct that.
Okay, that was where our conversation started. Councilman Teetz?
I don't, I, I support the way it was done in the past, simply because it's a historic document, and leaves something for folks to refer to in a quick review without having to watch the City Council meeting, and I don't think any of the descriptions are more than 10, 15 words long at the most, and the, if there is an error, or if someone has their point misrepresented, then we can certainly amend it as we go along. I take notes, I pretty well know what most people think at this point.
So...
I'd be happy to correct the one mistake, but I don't think we need to take the words away from everybody else's thought process.
That was not my intent at all, my intent was not to have to burden Mrs. Bittner with adding words, I mean, I wanted to show that it was in, against the recall effort, and that was fine, if that is acceptable to you, that she corrects it to say that Minish Bakshi spoke against the recall effort, I'm good with that.
Whatever, it's whatever Council would like the format to be, it was just more of a bringing it up for discussion, it had been brought up with the previous Council, it hadn't been brought up with this Council yet, so just to make sure that we were on the same page as far as how you wanted your minutes recorded.
I would move the correction for Mr. Minish.
Councilman?
Many Bashi?
Minish.
Minish? I would just move for that correction, if that's what it said.
Councilman Fleming?
I would support that, but I just wanna clarify what we're putting in the minute, so we get it right this time. So, how are we saying that if we're going to change, how are we directing the city clerk to change that? What would you be changing it to, since you've had a discussion?
The first pa, I think it's the first example is how the minutes currently look, and the second example would be how they would be, how would they look after the proposed change in format, basically.
Council, Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Just have a point of, or I guess a question, I know that there's a motion on the table, but I, I'm trying to differentiate here between two discussions. We have a motion on the table where we would be correcting, we're moving to approve the minutes with the one correction, but I think there's a simultaneous discussion going on here regarding whether or not we're gonna, we're gonna change the format.
It can be two different discussions, really, but...
At this point, we're just voting on whether or not we wanna make that one particular change? That's what's on the table?
Right, you can discuss how these minutes look from the March 19th meeting, and then, if you wish, we could have another discussion about how to, how you'd like them formatted in the future, so it's, or you can make both decisions right now. I just need a, kind of a consensus for the future, I don't need an actual vote on that.
Councilman Teetz?
I don't think we should amend the minutes as they're printed here, because we're gonna get into a situation where we're gonna ask the clerk to make judgment calls about folks' opinion. For instance, Sharon McDonald also spoke, and it says she spoke about a letter written by Mayor Daniels, and my notes are a little bit more, she had stronger opinions than just commenting about the letter, and she spoke also about the recall, and as well as Linda Kaima spoke about the recalls, well, I think we should just keep these spoke regarding about the, and without spending time to go through each of these, because I don't think it does the clerk any benefit to try to adjust this and try to determine folks' opinion, and additionally, if historically, people want to look back, they can watch the meeting minutes, or watch the meeting video, but I just, I don't think, I don't think it's her job to play umpire and call balls and strikes, so.
Mayor, if I may, that's originally why this topic came up with this item, is just because with suggested corrections being made to some of the comments, it just became kind of a concerted mine, like if, in the future, if you wanted that level of detail, or if you wanted less detail, just because if it gets towards transcribing comments, it can be a tricky process.
Councilman Slater?
And I can understand that, that you don't, I'm happy with the way you've been doing it personally, and I agree with Councilman Teetz that we don't need to get more specific than you've been doing it, I think you've been doing it great. The reason that I made the motion is that I felt that the mayor wasn't comfortable with what she felt this particular citizen said, but after I've looked at all of them, I agree with Councilman Teetz, and I'm going to withdraw my motion and just move J2.
As amended?
As, as original.
Okay. Support, okay.
Does that mean we're gonna keep the original format?
Yes.
We're saying, right?
Yes.
Okay. Gotcha.
Is that sufficient, Mrs. Bittner?
Yes, thank you very much.
Mrs. Bittner, when I called you, if we would've had a discussion that this was going to create this kind of time-consuming and confusing effort, I would certainly have said, don't change it.
Sorry.
Okay, so now, are we finished with the consent agenda items, or do we have to vote again?
We need to vote on J2A.
J2, and Councilman Slater, you moved?
I moved it, and Councilman Campbell seconded it.
Seconded it, and we've had our discussion, or is there any other discussion?
If I, if I can...
Councilman Henderson, of course.
Or I vote yes or no on it, what are we actually voting on then?
On the original?
Original minutes.
The original minutes, so we're gonna say yes, we want the original, the ones as printed on J2A?
No, I believe that it'd be...
In the, in the copy that, in the copy that we were given, there were two pages, one with handwritten J2A at the bottom, and one with J2A, computer printed at the top.
I'm moving the original.
The one that was provided in the packet.
The original agenda packet.
Yes.
Right.
With the detail.
With the details.
With the details.
Vote, please.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes, there are no memorandums or future Council agenda items, there's no Council referrals, so we move to Council comments. Anyone have comments? Mayor Proton McGinnis?
I have a couple of housekeeping matters, and then, I did want to potentially broach the subject for some of the information that was provided to us in the reports, and I'm assuming that this might be a good segue, but I'll do my housekeeping matters first. First and foremost, I've been informed that there's currently a blood drive that's scheduled for Wednesday, April 25th and April 26th. Again, the contact person at our City Hall would be Cindy Stewart, and this is going to be a Red Cross blood drive. You can sign up online, but I've also been informed that you can contact Cindy directly to do this. The blood drive is going to be taking place at the Community Center in Room 305, which is located, for those of you that don't know, at 3179 Libranoy, and it's going to be between 9:00 and 3:00 p.m. on Wednesday, April 25th, and Thursday, April 26th. I'm understanding that this is almost an emergency situation with the low levels that they have, and so, they are really asking members of the community to get out and participate in this blood drive, and you can get additional information, again, as I said, on our city website, where you can note the time for the event, the redcrossblood.org website, and through Cindy Stewart here at the city. And I'm also going to bring up again, April 26th, Troy People Concerned Spring Pasta Dinner from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., San Marino Club, that's located on Big Beaver in Troy, and I've been asked to provide a little bit of information about Troy People Concern, and that's the group that is hoping to raise funds with this pasta dinner. It's a service organization that supports Troy residents in times of need with assistance, information, and referrals. This is especially important right now during the economic downturn here in the metro-Detroit area. This type of group is really reaching out and helping citizens in our community that are in need, I mean, in the metro-Detroit area, so we would love to get out and support them. Tickets for this event are only $10 for adults and $5 for children under 10, and you can get additional information at tpchelps.org, and so, I'm asking everyone to purchase their tickets in advance, so they know who they can expect. And then, I'm assuming other people may have comments as well, and I don't know where people stand. Also included in our agenda for this meeting, we had some very detailed and helpful reports that give us some updates on departments, some of them are follow-up to ICMA study recommendations, and obviously, it's very important for us that we're on council at that time. important for us that we're on council at that time, and obviously, the new members, to see where we stand going forward, um, on some of those changes. And so, I, I'm not sure how the rest of council feels. I was wondering if, um, anyone had discussion, or if there were some points that the city manager would like to make, so we can hi- highlight that, uh, for people that may be watching, people that may have scanned the agenda but not read, um, all of the pages that were included.
Manager Zerli?
Thank you. Uh, I met this morning with, uh, various staff members to talk about the responses to budget issues that are in item N, N 6, and, uh, I asked essentially, uh, Peggy Sears, our HR director, uh, Gert Perriskewen, our IT director, Tom Darling, our Director of Finance, as well as, uh, Mark Miller, our Assistant Manager, and, uh, Chief Mayor, to talk about, about those matters. We realized that there's hundreds of pages in the agenda, and by me having staff come up to the microphone and talking about, uh, essentially, just a summary of, of the questions that were asked to us by the council, and by the way, uh, thank all of you for, for meeting with me and, uh, Mark Miller and, and Tom Darling, because this essentially is the first installment of the questions that, that was put toward us. In the next two weeks, I'll hopefully have the, the last and final installment, but, uh, if, if the mayor and council agree, when it comes time to talk about N. 2, I'd like to bring up, uh, various department directors to give a summary of their report, and then answer, answer any questions that, that you may have. It'll also give the audience, uh, a chance to, uh, take a look at what was being said, because again, it's a document on the website, but oftentimes, uh, a viewer doesn't feel like downloading, uh, you know, pages numbers 167 through 192. They'd like to have a, a narrative to go with it as well.
Okay. Any other comments? Councilwoman Slater?
Well, along the same lines, that was one of the questions that I, that I had, and I would appreciate a, a summary. I think they're very helpful letters, and just so that the audience knows, we all individually have met with Mr. Zarag and his staff to discuss some budget concerns in areas before we go into study session, and I think this will cut down, hopefully, on some of the discussions that have to be held during those discussions, so I think the public needs to hear what, what interactions, um, from staff regarding these letters that are in, in the council packet, so I would look forward to that, myself.
I was very impressed with the fire department report. It seems like we have some good statistics on, uh, events and training, and it almost seemed like there was a correlation between the advanced training and the, and the lower incidence of, uh, of fire, um, problems. So, I was impressed with that. Are we gonna have a person from the fire department talk about that this evening?
Uh, I did not bring anyone from the fire department. Uh, the issues that, uh, are contained in my cover letter were specific questions that were asked of, of me during our individual meetings that we had, and, uh, I didn't attach anyone's, on council's name to the questions, but these are the questions as a subset that I was asked to, uh, to have a response for, if you will. And again, we've had, and, you know, I, obviously, I can't meet with the majority of, of council, but I did meet with, with, uh, groups of you under a majority, and it would be a benefit to certainly have those issues highlighted. I can bring back, uh, in a couple of weeks, Chief Nelson, to talk about the fire department report.
So, are there any other comments? So, we'll move to the reports. Mayor, um, Manager Zerli, would you like to bring your staff?
Okay, thank you. Uh, the order I'd like to bring them in, uh, would be essentially, we'd start with Peggy Sears, our HR director, to, uh, discuss how pay and benefits in Troy compare to pay and benefits in other communities, and again, uh, the individual department head has a better knowledge of, of specificity of what's going on, and so, uh, you know, we could have a discussion after she speaks, and if I can't answer the question, I'll ask Peggy to, to answer for me.
Good evening, mayor and council. I was asked to address a question of how Troy salary and benefits compare to other communities. And as you recall, in September of 2010, uh, city council retained the International City Managers Association, ICMA, to conduct an organizational restructuring study. That study incorporated a review of salary and benefits among numerous organizations, jurisdictions in Michigan. It included a discussion of some research that was conducted by the Michigan Municipal League. In summary, the report showed that our salary and benefits compare very well to other communities. Uh, in many cases, our salaries are lower. Uh, the, we've been in the forefront in aggressively seeking to contain and manage benefits in terms of pension, post-retirement help, health insurance, um, and other benefits. The analysis that was conducted, um, on the salaries was also done prior to employee concessions. The non-represented employees, uh, classified and exempt group had a, their wages frozen in 2008, and subsequent to that, have had their pay reduced in the form of concessions. All of the employee organized groups also agreed to concessions. I think it's important to be cognizant of the caution that was expressed by ICMA in their report, in that, right now, Troy's competitive, but the more cuts we make, we run the risk of no longer being competitive. We are starting to see that in some of our recruitment efforts for somehow highly skilled, uh, jobs and jobs that require ex- um, extensive education.
Thank you, Mrs. Sears. Anybody have any questions on the council? Thank you.
Thanks, Peggy. Uh, next, I'd like to have Gert Perriskewen, uh, discuss the Information Technology Department.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
Um, I was asked to address the question of, is it feasible, or would we save money by outsourcing the IT department? And I think I found a lot of the same results that Peggy did. Um, number one, uh, the ICMA review recognized the department as being both efficient and effective when they did their review. Um, secondly, we did a survey of the hourly rates, uh, in the market for contract positions, uh, in comparison to our hourly rates, including benefits, and we were below, generally below those rates, and sometimes very markedly below those rates. Um, and so, going a step further, applying those market rates to our current staffing levels, we found that would actually cost the city an additional $290,000 if we outsourced. So, the, uh, resounding answer is that the city would not save money by outsourcing. Um, during that analysis, we also took a look at the per-computer charge and broke it down by the various functions and services provided by the IT department. And, um, after doing that analysis, we recognized that some of the computers at the library, like the public computers that are not used by staff, um, we could reduce those by about 15% the per-computer charge, just recognizing that there are some areas that they require a little less support from us. So, overall, we'll save the library about $32,000, $33,000 in the coming budget by lowering that rate.
Any questions? Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Um, I had a quick question. I know we've discussed this, and, and first of all, I just would like to say that, um, I'm very appreciative of the fact that we were, um, allowed the opportunity to kind of discuss some of these issues going forward before budget sessions, and that, um, you're working on these with your staff, you're bringing answers back to us, and I would hope, um, that this allows council to kind of take the information in, um, review it, and ask any follow-up questions, um, that they may have. I, I just wanted a, a brief explanation, and I know we've talked about it before, um, as recently as our approval of the library budget after the millage, but when you say that per-computer rate, can you please just, I guess, um, give us a little bit more background information? I think we understand that that's not actually the cost of one computer.
Of replacing computer, correct.
Right, but if you could give us a little bit of an explanation so that people, um, that are watching will also have that information.
Right. There's actually several components to that. Um, there's an administrative fixed component, that's about 16% of that per-computer charge. Uh, network support is about 15%. Uh, programming and web development support, 7%. Uh, GIS development is 11%. Application support is 26%, and PC support, the actual support, the hands-on support of the NPC is 25%. So, really, the replacement costs that a lot of people talk about, and the computer support costs, only 25% of that really relates to the desktop computer. The rest is the network and all other support for the department.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Teetz?
Yeah. The contract market, the comparisons, how, how do you construct those? I mean, I, I bet it's, you're providing a very unique service, and so I, I would think it'd be somewhat difficult to find, uh, you know, you can't dial up 1-800-FILL-INTHEBLANK. I, how do you, how do you construct that competitive, you know, free, you know, business?
Basically, how did I find the pricing to, to compare? Um, there's a number of con- contract companies that, um, I have used in the past, some that just approached me and sent me their rates. I also talked to a few different cities. Uh, one in particular is Grand Rapids, who completely outsources their IT department, so I used their rates in the comparison, which were all higher than our rates, actually. So, a variety of, variety of sources.
That's all for right now. Yeah, I was just curious.
Manager Zerli?
Well, I, I'll defer to the council talking for me.
Councilwoman Slater?
You know, in my discussions, you know, one of my reasons for having in-house IT is security issues with the police department. Uh, I know we've honed back on what we give out as far as GIS and things of that nature, because there was a point where we were giving way too much information out regarding our infrastructure, so maybe if you could just talk about what the benefits are for the security end of it, uh, servers that we use here that are just accessed by just a very few amount of people?
We do restrict security quite a bit, uh, especially between the, the police department and the rest of the city. There's only a couple of us that actually have access to the police side of the network, to servers there, and, um, we always do background checks on everybody that's here, but-
Manager Zerli?
Just a follow-up, if I could, um, no, go ahead. I'm done.
Sure. I was just going to mention that there's different methodologies to determine the cost of, of an IT department. Uh, we use, and have used for many years, the cost per computer, but as Mrs. Perriskewen indicated, you have fixed costs and variable, variable costs that sometimes can skew that, that, that number. Many cities just have an IT department, like we have a finance department, and, uh, all the costs involved with maintaining the information technology components for all the departments are put into one department called IT. I'm not saying which, which is better than the other, but in trying to make a comparison, Mrs. Perriskewen spoke about Grand Rapids that totally outsourced their department, and I think it was on a computer basis. Is that correct?
Um, they charge on a variety of pieces that they put together, but, but their overall per-computer cost, they calculated, is about $4,400 per computer.
And what's our cost?
Compared to our $3,300.
Okay.
And that, that, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Teetz?
And that includes also the long-term, um-
Replacement?
Excuse me, I mean, the long-term, uh, liability of, for our employees and so forth? Is that in- included as well in the $3,300? I'm just trying to-
Yes.
-get my head around it. Okay.
Yes.
Oh, it's the legacy cost?
Sorry?
Is that what you meant, the legacy cost?
The legacy cost, thank you. Yes.
Yes.
If, if you look at my analysis, I did remove the legacy cost to be a fixed cost rather than a variable cost.
But I answered your question as part of the $3,300.
But the $3,300 does include, yes.
Councilman Fleming?
Yes, looking at, at your letters, very well done, but you're saying that, um, I'm interpreting this correctly, that the library will be charged $2,785 per computer?
Just the public computers.
The public computers, because it takes less resources, because they're public computers and so forth.
Right.
They're not like the, you know, of, some other departments that are more specialized. If the library were to go out independently and look at cost of providing the service that you, you provide them on public computers, this is not replacing the computer, this is just the cost of, of providing the service for the computer, right?
It, it includes the replacement of the-
Replacement, okay. So, what, do you know what it would cost the library if they went out independent to get their own quote?
I, I don't know offhand, but, um, if they, if they went out just to hire staff, that's only one component of the entire service that they have. So, we've got servers in our server room, they would have to find a place for those, or they would have to pay us for that portion of the service, but, uh, but the rates in the market don't compare. I mean, they would be paying a higher rate for employees than what we currently hire people at. I mean, it's, it's gonna be a higher cost for any staff that they hire.
Let me, let me try to clarify that, if I may. And again, Gert and Susan Leerstine would know more about this process than I, than I do, but what we do, from a management perspective, primarily through our purchasing department with Susan Leerstine, and you've probably seen this, this phrase many times in the past, is that when there's an item to purchase something, sometimes, uh, a, what's called a, a, a market analysis is conducted first, and Susan goes out into the private sector and, and determines what the, what the market is for doing similar work, and then makes a determination that it is advantageous or not advantageous to either, uh, go out for bid. Oftentimes, it's to determine whether we should just initiate year two of a two-year contract, or year three of a three-year contract. And I think Gert did something similar to that by testing the market for outside, I don't want to use the word vendors, I don't know what the professional name is, but outside sources to do, uh, the IT function, not for a library per se, but just to do an IT function for municipal government. Is that, is that correct, or?
That's correct. That's correct, and I used some cities who actually had gone out for an RFP. Uh, again, Grand Rapids is a good example. They go out every four years, so their, their prices are what you'd find in the market for Grand Rapids. You might have to adjust them for the Detroit area, but-
So, if that's acceptable, that's fine. If it's not, then we'll do something else.
Councilwoman Slater?
I'm only gonna ask this 'cause I'll forget it if I don't ask it. I'm remembering it now, but, um, I think this is very, very important information, and can we get this on the website, um, so that people don't have to go look in the agenda packet, and can we tie this to the ICMA section for each one of these reports? Um, I just think it would be good if we could get it on the website, these reports.
Certainly. I'm sure we, we can find a spot for those outside of the agenda.
Mayor.
Would that apply to all of the departments? Because I was looking through, um, my information that we've received, um, over, you know, at six-month intervals or, or different periods with each department, and, um, even though some of them are a little bit foggy in my memory than the ones we're dealing with today, but, I mean, every department has done something like that in a direct response to ICMA recommendations, but also prior to that, our requests to pretty much review every department, and I know that they're available. The city attorney has done one, IT, the fire department, the police department, so it might be helpful, um, that as they are updated, that those, those can be tied directly to ICMA and, um, in a place that would be easy to find for the residents to go and say, you know, what's the latest information. Um, and I, I'm pretty sure that most of the departments have done that for us, and they seem to be doing it on a pretty, um, regular basis, which is great.
Sure. That's, we can certainly do that. Uh, I'll talk with staff tomorrow. I'm sure they'll look up the better terminology than I will, just off the top of my head, but we can call it something like an economic sustainability component, uh, of the city of Troy as an organization, and have the ICMA reports there and updates there, too.
Can I, can I make one more comment? Just theoretically, if the library should outsource, there are still fixed costs that would have to be absorbed by the rest of the departments, so overall, when you add them together, I'm fairly certain it won't be less- So overall, when you add them together, I'm fairly certain it won't be less than what we're funding right now.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Miller can talk about the backflow prevention element that's also attached.
Hello, I'm the mayor of council, and it's not backflow, it's outsourcing of cross-connection.
Ah, okay, sorry.
Control. And what that is, cross-connection is when it's the process of connecting a consumer of water to our city-owned water lines. And we had Hydrodesigns, a Troy company, come to the city and said that they can provide this cross-connection control function for $72,000. And we looked at the proposal, and one of the things that we identified is that when we made our cuts in the public works department, ICMA came back and said that we went too deep and we needed to add back employees to be sustainable in that realm. Secondly, the market comparisons show that we pay less than the private sector in this arena, and then we looked at the cost to privatize this function is more. And the reason for that is that the person we employ, who is a master plumber, does more than just the cross-control function, he works in many other areas. So if we looked at privatizing those other functions and things that that employee does, the total cost would be more than privatizing. I'll answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last, we have Chief Mayor and Lieutenant Gordon to talk about essentially a status report of the police department in relation to the ICMA recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor and Council, within your packet, we have the latest updated ICMA implementation report for the police department. The report's been compiled by Lieutenant Thomas Gordon, who's with me tonight. He will discuss a little, a little of the detail, we don't want to bog you down on minutia, but just to give you some examples of some of the detail of what we're doing. With more than $5 million budget reduction, which is 19% of our budget from last year, we've reduced our budget by that much money, by $5 million. We now enter the point in the change process here that ICMA recommended of starting to affect our actual service delivery, because we have a lot less people, so our service delivery is starting to change. I assure you, it's our intent to keep our service, the quality of our service delivery as high as we can, but the type of service and the actual service that we've been delivering in the past has to change because we have less people. Some of the examples of that are in our evidence technician area. We have 50% less evidence technicians than we've had in the past, which means we're not going to process the same type of scenes that we did before. We used to have the ability to process a lot more property crimes, that's going to change, and we have to be able to focus on crimes against person, which we're blessed, we don't have that many, but we're going to focus on those. We won't be able to respond to the auto theft, the larceny from auto, the crimes that are the normal crimes that occur in Troy. We're not going to be able to handle those like we're used to, because we just don't have the staff anymore. We're changing our misdemeanor retail fraud and shoplifting, the way we handle that. We're very hopeful that that doesn't cause the people that come out and do those type of crimes to change and start coming more to Troy. We're hoping we can keep our larceny rate down in our major malls. Police officers will no longer be responding to medical runs, so we've changed our request for ambulance protocol. Lieutenant Gordon will give some more detail on that. We've had to implement online reporting systems, which means people won't be able to call like they could in the past and get police officers to respond. We're going to be directing them to go online and make their own police reports and a lot of things that in the past they would get the personal service that we used to be able to give. They're not going to be able to do that anymore because we have to keep our staff available for emergency runs. I want to assure you that we are a professional organization made up of dedicated people. These changes in this reduced service does not necessarily equate to poor service, we're still going to give quality service, just going to be less of it because we have less people. Lieutenant Gordon has some specific information to illustrate some of the points I just wanted to give you in overview. Lieutenant Gordon?
Mayor and Council, thank you. As Chief Mayor stated, I was appointed the change manager for the ICMA recommendations last summer, and some of my duties are to track not only where we're at as far as implementing the changes, but also making sure that they fall in line with our values, that there are in fact best police practices, and then also to track the impacts that these have on us as far as product productivity as well as budget. Not to bore you with a number of details, but there were a couple of stats that came out just today. Our first quarter statistical reporting period ended on Saturday, the end of March, and I can say that one of the bullet points that's outlined in the memo to you on the ICMA recommendations, us no longer responding to routine medical calls for service. Now, we're still responding to anything that's life-threatening, and there's a telephone triage system, our dispatch protocol, go through a number of questions, not only through our telecommunicators, but also through Alliance Mobile Health, and if there's any indication that this is going to be a life-threatening emergency, we send the police officers. But the vast majority of the runs that we're no longer responding to are non-life-threatening runs. And I can tell you that for the first three months of 2012, there were a total of 378 incidents that we no longer responded to, 378 that we would have responded to had we been fully staffed. This reflects about 43% of the total calls for service in that area. Also occurring this past Saturday was our biannual shift change. We're able throughout the year to make several small movements in personnel across our four shifts, to try to make sure that we're properly staffed by time of day and day of week, twice a year. In March and September, we kind of do an overhaul of where we're at, and we're really able to redeploy officers across the four shifts as well as our traffic safety unit to make sure that we're doing the best with what we have. I can tell you that as of this past Saturday, the 31st, we are down about 28% in the number of officers that are available to respond to any call for service, not just the emergency ones. And this has really impacted our ability to maintain our specialist units and move more towards the generalist-type officer. And I believe there was some discussion at council meeting two ago about specifically our traffic safety unit. That at one time was a fully-staffed specialist unit that we were able to really deploy throughout various parts in the city to address any traffic problems that came up. Unfortunately, with our reduced staffing, those officers have been redeployed, and they've taken a much more generalist approach, so the traffic officer that had been sitting and watching a stop sign in front of the school or addressing a speeding complaint in neighborhood is now out taking a burglary report or any other routine call for service that we have. I don't have a specific measure for that as far as how it's impacted our ability to police, with the exception of, we noted about a 17% reduction in the number of hazardous violations that were issued during this reporting period during the first three months. So basically, with these traffic safety officers being redeployed to the shifts, they aren't available to take the enforcement action on the violations that are causing traffic accidents here in town.
You stand ready if there's any other questions or comments that we need to address?
Councilman Teetz?
I apologize. Can you give an example of what a non-life-threatening call would be?
Certainly, that was specifically used in the area of the request for ambulance. We get requests for ambulance for injuries, where someone will have an injury that's determined by, through the triage method, not to be life-threatening, say a slip and fall, but in the past, we would make sure we sent a police officer to, we're not sending them to that. There's some of our other facilities where doctors' offices, we would get, we'd get a, like a heart attack one, if they got medical porsions, that's a bad example, an injury runner. They have some other issue where someone has to go to the hospital, say for an infection or something like that, that's maybe long-term life-threatening but not immediately life-threatening. In the past, we would send an officer there to assist, we don't do that anymore. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, I think so, generally.
Councilman Slater?
I just, no one's asking permission to speak. I just wanted to point out something, too, that I think is evident when you look at the timeline, because we've been talking about these changes and their major overhauls to the way that the department is run. We tried to do our best, knowing that we had to reach a bottom line in terms of what we had for revenue, and the previous council spread those cuts out over a period of time, and even at that, at that rate, they were major changes. And with the success of the early retirement program, also has the disadvantage of moving a lot of those timelines forward quite a bit. So I've noticed that there are a lot of things that were recommendations by ICMA to accomplish over a six-month or one-year or two-year period of time based on the cuts that were being proposed. Those are all moved up, and I just wanted to commend you, I think it's very important that there is a change agent. I think there's very, it's very important that the culture of change is supported within the department so that you can make these restructuring changes. And I just want to commend you for doing the work that you've done, for keeping us updated on all of the work that's going on, and also for dealing with some pretty unexpected changes in numbers before, before the time periods that were originally proposed. So I think it's very important that we receive the information. The question that I have, obviously, you're here, we know that about 13% of the city population gets information from watching the city council meeting, so that leaves a big chunk of people that may not hear what we're saying here, may not read the agenda. And I was just wondering how you're getting the information out to the public so that they're aware of the changes as they're taking place and people are not caught by surprise.
There's many good points, so I'd like to go through them in order so I don't miss anything. I was very fortunate, before she retired, to have Captain Colleen Mott work as the change agent. After Captain Mott retired, I reached out and was able to fortunately get Lieutenant Gordon to step in to fill those shoes. He's done a very good job in keeping up with that. We did accelerate a lot of the changes that were requested by the ICMA report, just because just the manner we reached out to our people, utilized our people to get it done, and also a point that goes along with that is we reduced our staffing at a quicker pace than what ICMA thought we were going to do and what we had planned on when we originally started this process, going back a couple of years now. We got a lot more people retire quicker than what we anticipated. So that led to the fact that we're one year ahead of schedule for where we needed to be with our reduced staffing. So we're feeling the effects of that. So in other words, we're saving money, but we're ahead of schedule in reducing personnel by one year already. So we're where we're supposed to be next year. The point about getting the information out there, we've got good relations with the media people, there's a couple here that are tonight, we make sure that we make ourselves available to that, we release this information, and Lieutenant Gordon and I, there's just so many different things going on, we're just talking about your idea of making sure that this is on, on the website. We know it goes out in this report format, we're not opposed, obviously, to putting any of that information out that way. If there's other suggestions as to how we should get that information out, we're more than willing to do it, but we try to be very transparent with it.
Thank you.
Certainly, thank you.
Councilman Slater?
Well, you guys answered most of my, my questions, but I mean, I am really impressed when I go through the recommendations and I see the word "done" near the end of almost all of those. And I know this came early, and I think that was an extra burden on the police department because it happened quicker than you anticipated. Especially when we first looked at this, we were looking at laying off police officers this year. And thankfully, because of retirements and because of downsizing, we haven't had to lay off one police officer in fact. In fact, I believe we're at a point where we've, correct me if I'm wrong, we're down two or three staff from what we're supposed to be next year, something like that?
Yes, we're down three sworn positions currently, and we're down four non-s sworn positions. So we're down to hold of seven from what we're allocated for positions that are unfilled.
For next year, correct?
These are current, I'm sorry if I'm not being clear on that, we're down seven more than what we needed to be, so those are seven vacant positions that I hope to fill.
Understood, but I think we're supposed to be at the bottom in 13, 14, correct?
Yes.
So we're way ahead of 13, 14.
I missed the question.
No, I'm just trying, trying to point out what's really happened to the police department quickly. This was supposed to happen over three years, and I think I've made it quite clear to everybody, my feelings about a generalist police department as opposed to a, a non-generalist police department. But I just wanted to note how many "dones" I see at the end of the recommendations, and I commend, commend your staff because of what's happened quickly to you, and I think hopefully during the budget discussions, we'll be talking about the police department.
Thank you. I was very fortunate, good staff, as represented by Lieutenant Gordon, there's a lot of other people that worked with him, can't bring everybody here. Tom represents all the other people that worked on the committees and did this, this is, no one of us could do this, it takes a group effort, and everyone's been willing to step up, and I appreciate your mentioning that.
Thank you, Chief Mayor, Lieutenant Gordon. Is that it?
Yes, ma'am, the second installment will be in two more weeks.
All right, thank you very much. Well, we have no study items, so we will move into closed session. I want to thank everyone for joining us this evening. We look forward to seeing you at the next council meeting regularly scheduled for April 16th. This portion of the meeting is adjourned.